Order. Good morning. Excuse my voice. I feel fine. Sounded not great. Welcome to our special meeting, June 26, 2023, where we'll be discussing the superintendent's contract. Before we get started, let's please stand for the pledge. Okay, thank you so much. So just a couple of housekeeping items very quickly, just to give everyone an update. We did have ongoing negotiations, very productive and in good faith over the entire last week and all throughout the weekend. As noted, the board gave authority not to exceed the package of $300,000, a three-year contract with bonus incentives included. We, there were a couple of areas that when we got to the end, that the, when you look and quantify it all, we were at or slightly above 300,000, and then there were additional items that were brought forward that were not part of the conversation the board contemplated. So based on the timing, this allows us to get clarity on those items, which we hopefully we can accomplish today. Obviously, this is an important document and to be, ensure the public gets, the public, the public gets an opportunity to view the final draft of the contract, we'll probably have to, well, we will indeed have to either schedule a special meeting to formally adopt the version or add it to the meeting. Well, we have the swearing intent that will be scheduled for July 17. We could always do it right before then as well, before his swearing in. So those are just a couple of the overviews. And then we were mentioning that we had two printouts. All are the same as far as content, but just want to make sure we're working off the same document as, I know they've been claimed to be the same, one with a clip, one with a staple. We'll do the staple. Forgive me, I said clip, but I think some people had already written notes on that, so we'll work off the staple. So I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Duggan, who is, we're going to walk one by one. And as mentioned, a lot of these have been what I would call temporarily or temporarily agreed, tentatively agreed upon. But certainly, since we're going section by section, it's the opportunity for any board members to weigh in if there are any areas that you would have concerned questions or would like to amend. So, Mr. Duggan?
Sure. So, good morning, everybody. Just want to kind of walk you through the process. Over the last week, we have engaged in discussions with counsel for Mr. Connor, myself and the board chair. We've had a lot of really good thoughtful conversations. You know, he has a lawyer on the other side, and we've had, you know, great dialogue about how this should be structured, you know, and we have come up with what I think is a contract that is, you know, within the, if there's a marketplace for value around the state with superintendents, within that, it's within the authority that has been provided by the board to date, you know, and I think we have a good, a good dialogue and good faith and a lot of productive conversations. We have not agreed to every term. I can tell you, though, after a long day of negotiating almost every line of this document yesterday, we are in agreement to everything except for where it's either highlighted or there's a margin comment, and you'll see when we go through this, that, you know, there's a few of those, you know, every couple pages, there's a couple of different things. So what I basically did, so that there was no confusion about what was being sought, is I had counsel for Mr. Connor propose language that they sought, and that is what you see in the margin comments, where there is what it looks like contractual language. So, and they have seen this document as well, and they have, you know, haven't said that it's not accurate or anything like that. So, with that being said, I can go through the document, you know, section by section if you'd like. If you have questions, let me know, and, you know, I'm happy to do that, so.
Yes, please. So, and I know, again, we were talking about the copies. The one that Mr. Duggan provided is color-coded, so, again, there should be no differences. They're exactly the same.
There's no, there's, what I sent last night to, and again, obviously, this was an ongoing thing over the course of the week. You know, ideally, we would have gotten it out sooner, but there wasn't a finished product yet that could be consumed yet, and there was a lot of back and forth on this and a lot of great discussions. And as soon as I could finalize it, I got it to Ms. Tompkins, because of course, the public needs to see this. But then I printed some off today, because I wasn't sure, like, since it went out at about 10:30 last night, you all would have printers at your houses, you know, that late, so I figured in abundance of caution, I would bring another set.
No, thank you. So, yeah, if you could just start with, we'll start with each section, because there are some elements in here that, again, would just help everyone understand the board don't know all the various nuances.
Sure. Okay, so, Section 1 is called Term of the Agreement. You know, as the board asked us to do, we have entered with a three-year contract. The start date is agreed to at July 17 of this year, so a couple of weeks. Ends on June 30, the end of the school calendar year in 2026. At the request of the board, we added language that, you know, that the parties will discuss an extension prior to July 1, 2025, which would be prior to entering the last full year of the contract. And then if we don't reach an agreement and it just expires with the passage of time, then the contract runs out. Section 1.2 is pretty common language in employment contracts. It's just that Mr. Connor would perform the duties of superintendent as required by law in good faith and a diligent manner, you know, based on, you know, state law, FDOE rules, those type of things.
See, no comments on that section? Okay, keep going.
Okay. Section 2, Job Responsibilities. So you'll see here 2.1, and then it kind of breaks into four subgroups. I think that's just a fair and accurate statement of what the obligations of a superintendent are under Florida law. You know, I think when we get into the next sections, in Section 3, when you get into doing an evaluation of Mr. Connor under Section 3.2, which we'll talk about in just a moment, you'll see it's tied back to, you know, the performance of those duties in Section 2, which is, you know, what he's required to do statutorily and under Florida law.
I think, I mean, unless anyone has any comments on Section 2, 2.1, 2.2, and all the way to 2.1, 4 are statutory authorities. So, are there any comments on that before we move to evaluation? Okay. Moving on to 3, Mr. Duggan?
Section 3 is entitled Evaluation. There really are two different parts contained here. There's 3.1 and 3.2. I'll start with 3.1 first. 3.1, this, this contract was written in a way to reward accountability, and it was set up in a way where metrics would be mutually agreed to and to create a level of accountability at the top of the organization that will hopefully trickle down throughout the organization. And the idea is that if those metrics and goals are accomplished, then Mr. Connor would be financially rewarded in the form of a bonus, and we'll get to Section 5.1. But the way it is structured and the way that the district has sought to do it is up to $30,000 upon achievement of different metrics. You'll see in Section 3.1, no later than October 17 of this year, and why that date was used. It was about 100 days after he started, which would give Mr. Connor the opportunity to kind of look under the hood a little bit, for lack of a better way to describe it, and see what's going on here, before he was asked to come up with measurables by which he would be evaluated by. We thought that was a fair way to do it, rather than, you know, to impose things prior to him having a chance to observe for himself. And then each October thereafter, this exercise will continue. So in October of these contracts, you know, the board and the superintendent will meet, come up with goals and measurable metrics by which Mr. Connor's bonus and performance will be evaluated over the course of the next year. And if he achieves those goals and measurable metrics, you know, he'll be, you know, entitled to the bonus that is mutually agreed to between the board and Mr. Connor. By September 1 of each year, he will do a self-appraisal of what he believes he accomplished as far as those goals are concerned, and that will be considered by the board. And then in October and no later than November 1, a decision will be made regarding whether he, you know, met those goals and measurable metrics. So that's how the bonus structure is set up. It's set up, again, with dialogue about what those will be, and then measured over the course of the year or the following year.
So, and just to shine a little bit more light on this, as you can note, there's a lot of dates on here, and, but as much as to make sure it's dictated and we'll have a clear map of that, so we're well in advance providing those information. But I think that it's also important that, as Mr. Duggan mentioned, to put the valuation or measurements in place. Obviously, that has to be agreed upon and mutually discussed, but to line it up with about 100 days, and I think Mr. Connor agreed with that timeframe, and that when you can, again, this is more for the workshop when we just certain, make this, when we finalize what those metrics would be. But the thought was, given that, you know, year one may not necessarily illustrate the academic gains or improvements right away because certain systems are being in place, that the measurables may be more, and again, it could be wide, far-reaching, but that was, that was discussed, that there would be multi-phase goals, but year one would have specific metrics where they would seek to achieve the three- to five-year goal, just to highlight some elements.
Yeah, so your job as a board come October, and so you should be thinking about this between now and then, would be to come up with thoughtful goals and metrics by which you wish to evaluate for the purpose of the bonus and the accomplishment of the superintendent. So you should be thinking about, you know, what, what type of metrics do you want to put in place? What are you seeking to have him accomplish tied to the bonus? And in October, the parties will thoughtfully reduce that into a written form, and that will be the measure by which the bonus is measured over that next year.
And just one more note is that on the, the bonus piece was that when we finalize collectively what those items will be and the, you know, and what the financial impact would be aligned to that said metric or metrics, that we would also specify the tool or source that we would be using to confirm that that had been met in advance, so that there's no ambiguity when.
Right. It'll be really important to narrowly tailor those goals so that there is no ability for ambiguity in them.
Okay. Are there any questions on that?
Okay, Section 3.2, under that same Section 3.
Mr. Edwards?
I don't, thank you. I don't know if you, I think this is an important piece of the conversation, and what I think, we don't have a workshop in July. I would propose that we have this on our workshop in August to discuss, that it becomes officially as of today, that it, that it's discussed and at that workshop. And the other piece of this is we do have evaluation documents that should be sent out to us as soon as possible that we can work from, so that by the time we get into our workshop in August, because these dates, my experience has been that we're always chasing our tail in the past, and I'd rather be proactive on this. It's an important component moving forward.
Absolutely. And so that's why, actually, we had the exact same conversation last night as far as calendar, making sure we're ahead of it, even with the evaluation tools, because there's various ways you want to tweak that. There's one other component in here, and I'm going to get ahead of us, but that also, Mr. Connor has the mutually agreed upon communication processes that would be done by September 1, if I can remember correctly. So, yes, so August, we'll have a lot of those components in the workshop to.
So as you're thinking about 3.1, when we get to Section 8.1, there will be a tie-in discussion about how the board will communicate, and we have kind of mapped out what the, what the expectation for communication between board and superintendent is in Section 8 when we get a little further in this. But flag that, because it relates to 3.1.
So, actually, let's go to 3.1 and 3.2, and then we'll stop and do an overall discussion on the evaluation process. I think that makes sense.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, so 3.2 is separate from the evaluation of whether Mr. Connor would earn a bonus. So 3.1 is tied to accomplishing whatever metrics you come up with tied to compensation. Section 3.2 is a way for you to evaluate him. So 3.1 will be a decision made, you know, as a group, whereas 3.2 will be individual evaluations. You know, it's a similar process where you'll meet and you'll come up with goals for the year by which he'll be evaluated upon, you know, from a performance standpoint, not from a bonus standpoint, but from a performance standpoint. And you'll meet in advance. He will do the same self-appraisal towards the end of the year, and then you will, at the end of that year, do a more traditional performance evaluation based on what had been mutually agreed to 12 months prior.
Okay. Is that it for the three-point evaluation? Are there any comments on the evaluation, unless you guys wanted to continue, and then, but it's easier to take them in chunks, segments? Are there any comments? No? Everyone's good with the language. I'm going to take silence as it's agreed upon. Okay, then we can go on to the compensation.
Okay, so compensation, so just to back up, prior to engaging in negotiations, in anticipation of them, I wanted to get a sense of, you know, what superintendents make in the state of Florida. Obviously, you have two types of superintendents. You have an elected superintendent and an appointed superintendent. Most elected superintendents don't have employment contracts, right? There's a statutory formula of how their compensation is made, so that's a kind of a different process. But most of the superintendents around the state are appointed, and so, and as you know, there's a big difference between the small panhandle counties and, you know, Miami-Dade, for example, would be the two ends of the spectrum. So what I tried to do is look for contracts that were communities similar to Sarasota. So I looked for places where the population was similar. You know, we're a mid-sized county towards the top of the mid-sized list. I'd looked at, tried to get as many agreements as I could of other A-rated districts around the state, because we are an A-rated district and have historically been an A-rated district. And then I tried to get as many agreements as I could from this area to see if there was a, you know, kind of an industry standard within Southwest Florida. So that was kind of the thought process. I was able to get 10 different contracts of appointed superintendents. You'll see that under the paperclip here, there is a kind of a rough notes of, you know, a summary of what those 10 other, you know, contracts are. Just, so first of all, it's an evaluation of what Dr. Asplin, our prior superintendent's compensation was, you know, Manatee, Charlotte, Brevard, Orange, Martin County, Pinellas, Seminole, Palm Beach, and Collier. And my goal was to try to give you all a snapshot of what other superintendents around the state make. I didn't want to guess, you know, and that was done. And I had distributed this document. There are a couple tweaks between this version and the last one I sent. I had inadvertently left off a couple severance provisions that I was unaware of that was pointed out when we were talking. So anyway, the bottom line is I wanted to try to give you all a range. And then certainly, at the time that you selected Mr. Connor, there was discussion of, you know, $300,000 of total compensation. Now, I will say, in looking at the contracts, there's no one set way that these are done around the state. Some people have higher base salary and, you know, without some of the perks like tax-deferred annuities and things like that, you know, some people have automobile allowances, some don't. So to try to make it as uniform as I could for the purposes of this discussion, I concentrated on what, you know, total compensation was, because everybody's unique situation leads to them creating a contract that caters to their needs. So, so that was the thought process there, was to try to come back in a range that you all were comfortable with based on total compensation. And within that, you'll see, and here's our first margin comments about areas that we are not in agreement on. So I will say, the first one is, so, in an accountability-based contract, you would have a lower base salary and a higher bonus potential, you know, or, you know, you could do a higher base salary and a lower bonus. So that's up to the board as a group to decide. We were trying to make a system for accountability for the superintendent, so that would trickle down throughout the rest of the district, but that's certainly not the only way to do this. So, we have a base salary of $245,000, but I will tell you that Mr. Connor has asked that that be $255,000, not $245,000. And I will say to that point, he has said, "I am willing to take correspondingly 10,000 less in bonus compensation." So he's seeking higher base, lower bonus, whereas we're seeking lower base, higher bonus. I don't have a preference either way. You could do it either way. That's a decision for this board to make, but that is what his ask is here, is a higher base and a lower opportunity for top-end bonus.
Thank you. Mrs. Rose?
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to start out by thanking you, Mrs. Sigler and Mr. Duggan, legal counsel, for the work that you've done to give us all this information. Very much appreciated. Relative to the base salary, I'm in full support of the $245,000 moving to $255,000 and reducing the bonus from 30 to 20. In order to get to that level of accountability, all the things that go into performing the job are non-negotiable, or you're not even going to get to the point of accumulating a bonus. So I don't see weighted accountability in a bonus. I see it more as incentive. And the 20,000 is an incentive that exceeds what we have given as a norm in our district in all past trends, as well as when I look at the examples, and, and thank you, Mr. Duggan, for the examples that cross over districts that are, have relative demographics or data, numbers, et cetera, to Sarasota County schools. The high base salary is 330,000, so I think that the 255,000 and reducing the bonus from 30 to 20 is very reasonable from this board member's perspective. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Edwards?
Thank you. I do concur with Ms. Rose. The overall piece of this process in terms of salary negotiation and bonus incentive, I commend Mr. Connor for understanding how the two are related. From my perspective, by the time he gets here, does his listen-and-learns and gets his feet wet in the school district and starts coming up with specific ideas and suggestions of how we can meet our achievement goals, it's going to be next to impossible for him to reach those kinds of metrics within the first year, for sure. And it will be a stretch at the second year, so I can appreciate the base salary with, with the lower incentive on the, on the bonus side. But that is directly connected to that evaluation document that I think is so important for us to agree on, because we have to be able to agree on what the goals are, both short and long-term. Quite honestly, I think the whole compensation package, where we are and how it relates to annual raises and annual bonuses, can be established that the, almost kind of keep the base salary kind of level, but increase the, the bonuses on the far end, so that the idea is that he could exceed what this back package says if we really do meet our achievement goals. And I think that's something that we can discuss as a board. But on the short side, I'm in full agreement that we reduce the, the incentive and increase the base salary.
Thank you. Mrs. Marinelli?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with my fellow board members on the going from 245 to 255, because I also feel that our district is at a very critical point, and we need to show good faith that we are taking this, the new superintendent very seriously, because he has a monumental task in front of him. So I most definitely am in agreement with going to the 255. Thank you.
And I just want to shine a light on just where my thought was, and certainly, this is welcomes to hear what everyone else wants to do, but just for some clarity, looking at Ms. Dr. Asplin having been at 225 and then leaving at 240, respectively, with the doctorate, I know that that's a, and that, there was, there was method to our madness through this process, because people, we usually pay additional for masters, additional for doctorate, and I know that was referenced, so that was where we were taking that stab at it, and then elevating the incentive structure. I can tell you that we had a number of people, both on our advisory committee but across the community, specifically our business community, weighing in very heavily on, not who, but how, the opportunity for a new superintendent to have a significant bonus, bonus structure, because it really does create that carrot to celebrate. Now, that's a monumental task. There's a lot of different things, and I think that's why I highlighted that. There is a very clear reality that as a board, creating those metrics on, for year one, we need to think and be, you know, realistic that it's not necessarily going to illustrate those outcomes academically, per se, in year one, but there are organizational things or financial things, or when we come up with a handful of them, that are absolutely able to be implemented in year one and that we would be able to evaluate, that would also help in moving us farther down the road. I would say, you know, and again, I, my, my only stress to, to my fellow colleagues would be to not stress to my fellow colleagues would be to not lower the bonus compensation piece. I think that that plays a very significant role and opportunity, and, and that it really allows people to strive to an extra level. So even, I'm not, you know, I, we try to stay within the 300,000, but if the two, increasing the base pay is something that sounds like the majority of the board wants to do, I would just encourage the consideration of at least keeping the bonus opportunity substantial. I think it sends a good message. I think it's right in line with kind of the pace of accountability and going the extra mile to do the extra work that we all know is so desperately needed. Mrs. Rose?
I just have to reflect back of, as a principal and being very data-oriented with my school-based leader colleagues, and our bonus was $1,000. And I can assure you, we worked our tails off to get it. 20,000 is quite impressive. I'm not in favor of increasing this total package. I am in favor of the very reasonable 255 base salary, and the 20,000 is quite, quite going to be far more than what is the norm out there in other counties and that we have done. And I'm very confident that that is sufficient.
Very good. Thank you. Are there any other comments on that? And Mr. Duggan, do you have the clarity that you need?
Yes. Okay, so the next bullet point, staying under 4.1. So you could either put this under 4.1, or you could just make another section. One other point of disagreement in this discussion is, you know, we have attempted to set this up as a, as a, as a bonus incentive contract, and with less of the just raises just because. So, one of the asks here that we had not been agreeable with, but, you know, certainly up to this board, would be whether Mr. Connor has asked for a raise each year consistent with the raises given to other high-level cabinet, like executive cabinet members. You know, on one hand, those people don't have the opportunity to have a bonus. On the other hand, I think historically, that has been done here. Certainly, Dr. Asplin, our former superintendent, had that agreement and provision in his contract. You may remember in December that there was a retroactive increase to Dr. Asplin's salary that took him from 227 to about 243. You know, so I throw that out there. The superintendent, you know, when you proportionally increase the dollar amount at his salary, it's a big jump. You know, a teacher, if you give them, you know, a certain percentage, or even an administrator a certain percentage, because those salaries are lower, they don't see it in their bank account as much as the highest-paid person in the district. So I just, I throw that out there. The other thing is, and this goes to the severance discussion we'll have in a moment, is that, you know, when you increase the base salary, the severance is tied to base salary. So the increases in base salary that occur increase the size of the severance as well, correspondingly.
Thank you. Mrs. Rose?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Mr. Duggan, for the explanation. The, if you go back historically in Sarasota County schools, and pay raises, and the like for administrators, is very, very embedded in the culture of how we have functioned over decades, actually. And I've always looked to, and also will look to this superintendent, given that we are able to negotiate this contract, to lead that culture in the most productive way. I'm not in favor of us making him the example of a culture change. I don't think that behooves him or us. He is someone that I believe can come in and lead us to where we need to go. And I don't, I'm not in favor of separating him out from where we have historically been. However, I'm very much looking to him to lead us, not only with academic achievement, but a culture that is productive and, from a financial standpoint as well as an academic achievement standpoint. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Edwards?
I thank Mr. Duggan for bringing up the, how the increments of a base salary can easily jump. And that goes back to what I said just in my previous comment, that we may want to not increase base salary, but increase the bonus plan to what Mrs. Ziegler had said. And so what I'm suggesting is a whole fresh approach to this compensation that does lead from the top about how important the academic achievement is. I know, I don't want to, I also agree with Mrs. Rose, that what we're attempting, at least from my individual seat, is a slight change in accountability as it relates to measurable results. Lots of times, I found myself on the dais asking the question, "How will we know?" So, and that is, if we start with the superintendent, and then, as a board, impress upon the superintendent how important it is to create those measurable results with his team and so forth and so on. And the culture can gradually change into quantifiable, measurable, bonus-able results.
So which way, so just for-
So I'm, I'm fine with how we have it exactly today, but that's part of what I want to talk about when we get to the evaluation document, is how do we, how do we specifically pinpoint the compensation plan? I don't think, that was the one place where I was going to raise-
Mike.
Do we, do we automatically want to just say the superintendent gets the same raise that the administration gets? I'm not sure I'm in favor of that. But create a higher bonus?
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
And just to add context to that, when I looked at the, again, it's a unscientific evaluation. I looked at 10 of 67, or probably 10 of maybe 60 contracts. I don't know how many elected there are, but the majority of superintendents are appointed. So say there's 60. I looked at 10, tried to have similar counties to some degree to get just a rough idea. Some people had automatic raises, some others did not. I will tell you, I have recently looked at state university presidents, you know, which is, you know, you think of traditionally K through 20. That is, I guess, 13 through 20, right, instead of K through 12. So they're doing similar duties, but they are not doing K through 12. So it's close, but not exact. I will tell you that the compensation analysis that I saw was an average increase each year of 4%.
Okay, Mr. Enos?
I'm sorry.
Oh, there you go. Yeah, yeah.
I was just going to say, the one last piece of this is that, from my perspective, it would be a sliding scale. So perhaps the first year, he would get the same base increase that the whole administrative team gets, but the second year, it goes to 50%, but the bonus is higher, because we're, we're driving it to that place. And that's, I'm not trying to hurt him in any way, shape, or form. I'm just trying to change the direction of the culture that he could, in fact, knock it out of the park and make big bucks if our, if our kids are doing that much better. And, and that's really where I'm trying to move the, the direction of the compensation. Not to hurt him, but to help everyone.
No, no. And yeah, I think that's a good point, Mr. Enos. Sorry to, but everything is, is being looked at this as, in a good-faith way to set everyone up to be successful for the, for the agreed-upon mission. And that was very much my intent, and I know Mr. Duggan relaying that back and forth. Mr. Enos?
You know, and the way that I look at this is, obviously, in the first part, I have no, no problem in going up to the 255, which I didn't comment on. But one of the things that I would say is that, when you're really looking at that, and if this is a business, in the business of educating children, of supporting our staff. So when you really look at that, is that everything that we do out there is in reference to, is about, well, what are you doing, just like Mr. Edwards said? What is the data that goes ahead to support that we're actually doing and we're achieving, where we're supposed to be going, and what we're doing? So when I look at this, is I, I don't look necessarily, but I look at it as if, let's say you kept it at 30,000, he's at 255 with 30,000. That compensation would be a lot greater than receiving a 4% or 5% administrative pay raise for just being in the seat. Because I think we're at a turning point where, you know, if you look at a $1.4 billion business, and you look at what is going to be the, you know, what are we doing to support our staff? What are we doing with raises? What are we doing with compensation package? Where are we going with that? I look at it that, is that what ultimately is your incentive at a $1.4 billion corporation? What is your centers, the measurables, is that you're increasing, you're, you're looking for performance, that the performance base is, is to come from there. I know that being in education is not being the CEO of Walmart, but I also understand that it gives a, it ultimately, I know that the tools are here to be number one in the state. I think the tools are here to be number one in the, in the, in the United States. I know from our community, our support, everything, our teachers, our staff, you know, we have everything there. And this ultimately, I believe that it's still great compensation at 255. And like, maybe that we do something, that it's a re-opener in one year to look at the pay raise. I'm, I'm more than acceptable that, but I also know is that we need to be able to move third-grade reading. We need to be able to move VSC. We need to be able to look at pre-K. We need to make sure that our teachers are receiving more than our surrounding counties, and that we've never been less than them. And, and we need to look at all of those things to be able to push the needle to where we need to be. So I'd like the incentive piece that we, listen, this is the expectation, as just if you come in on another big contract or any other big company. This is our, this is our mission. This is what we need. There's hard decisions to be made. And, and moving forward, I think, you know, a cabinet graduated, you know, 25, 30, 35, whatever that we want to put on there to be able to do that. Maybe like, you know, at the first year, we do a re-opener, maybe they do receive some compensation, then we, as an increase. But I think that we're at a pot where we really need our, our district to, to kick, to kick it, and I don't want to say kick it in gear, but we really aren't looking at that. We, we need to make sure that our kids know how to read and write, and that they know where they're going. And we need to, we, we just need that, whatever it needs to be, in order to incentivize that. You know, I'm 100% in favor. So as it relates to this, I kind of spoke in circles. I think that we could do something in a year, but ultimately, as I like the incentive-based, because I don't necessarily, if, if, I just like that, that's with a performance-based contract, is that you are able to achieve higher dollar amounts, which would be way far exceed what you would receive as a regular pay raise for excellence. So thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to make a comment, just as we go around. So I, I had, this was an area, again, I know that historically, in the last three years, the conversation about changing or evaluating or amending the way in which administrators get raises was on the table with, it was there with Dr. Asplin. I know there's staff here that we actually followed ourselves in that situation when we got to the end of the year after approving a record-breaking, I mean, a record raise compensation package for our amazing teachers and classified staff, which was 7%. And then when it got to the administration, being that there is, that's a substantial package, and then having people on the top end of the scale, I will tell you, those who were at the top of the scale were some of the ones advocating for a, a scaled one. So it just shows you the kind of integrity and quality of our staff, that they would have benefited better if it was a flat across the board. But that was something that they had, you know, they saw and understood it from that financial standpoint. I think when, and so that was one piece, that I said, you know, I think that what we have in play right now isn't, is, has been discussed as not being the ideal situation. So it doesn't really seem strong to say, "Let's keep doing that." Certainly not imposing what that would be, but I would be remiss if I didn't say, you know, "We have a new administrator coming in." And one thing that I think is so important of saying, you know, giving that time and that opportunity for them to evaluate what's happening, where they believe they can take things, and what that looks like on year one, year two, year three. And I will say this over and over again, no matter who's in that seat, we all want to do whatever we can to make them successful. And I think one thing that the community and ourselves, and makes this workable, is when you have someone, an administrator, that's saying, "Okay," they can be bold with some of the goals that they want, and real, but realistic, and then maybe even have a stretch goal. And then we have a budget that supports that. And then they have staffing that supports that. And so when we look at administrative add-ons, to me, if there's, even as we move to this process, I don't, you know, when we look at even just evaluation, I'm sorry, the structure of the organizational structure, because they're going to own that goal, what they want, what they need to get there, I think is so important. And then putting accountability measures, and again, we can't manage that, but those are the kind of things I think I'd like to see. And as such, because everyone's kind of working through that goal, and everyone plays a part, if they're able to articulate that, or if we're setting that tone with those kind of accountability structures from the get-go, I think, to Mr. Edwards' point, I mean, we start to create that culture. And I think that really does behoove us to do so. And I think, again, there's a lot more conversation, but I didn't want it to be sticky in the aspect of, "This is going to mirror what it has in the past," when I think we all have had conversations that that really just wasn't a working system. So that was my process of thinking, and I, that, and I still believe that to be the case, but I just wanted to share my, my thought process. Mrs. Rose?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My colleagues brought up two points that I just want to reinforce. One was renegotiate annually. The other colleague brought up re-opener of this variable, and I want to substantiate why I'm in agreement with that. I don't believe that we have had a, the benefit of an instructional leader that leads with progress monitoring, with accountability, with the community, teachers, schools, and the board, being able to visibly see data moving, the school community leaning in on the resources and professional development. If you look into Mr. Connor's leadership style and his record as a result, it's very much accountability with data from school-based leaders to district departments, and then how does that all come together in systems, in a structure, with resources, with everyone believing that they have the tools that they need. If you listen to him, and you look at the people that he's worked with, and, and the visibility of growth, I feel we're missing one important variable here. What is he bringing to this district that goes into this formula? So I do, and want to reinforce, and I don't know what that means from a legal standpoint, renegotiate annually or a re-opener, because we're missing the most important variable, how he's going to lead, what database, what progress monitoring, what accountability systems. As a board, we certainly have been, give us the data. I know I have been. Let me, where's the transparency? I want to see it growing. How do the resources align? But that has to go past us into a superintendent, and how they lead, and how they hold accountable as that flows, as well as support the results. So I feel like we're missing the most important variable in this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Edwards?
I, I think basically, we're saying roughly the same thing. But when I go back to the evaluation document about wanting to talk about that in August, it means that the superintendent will have, in fact, been here basically one month. But at least, the dialogue can open from that point of view of what is he bringing, and how would he like to be measured. And so we can, we can get to that, even if we both, or we, as a superintendent and the board, agree that we need another 90 days to get to that document, but at least the document is done for September or October when, when we're there. So it has, and so I'm, I'm exactly saying, it has to be measurable and accountable. I don't want to rehash the past in, in that regard, but from my perspective, as an individual board member, that is the direction that I've been moving in from the time I got to this seat. And to what Mrs. Rose said, the culture did not support that. So we're getting there.
So I would just add that if, if there is a desire to have a re-opener, that you tie it to the criteria that you create in Section 3, whether it's through the bonus structure or through the evaluation. Like, for example, if all of the bonus metrics are met, and there's a positive evaluation, something like that, that might be the language that would trigger reopening. But certainly, that's up to you. I just throw that out there as thinking creatively about how to do that.
So, well, I just want to get clarification. So then, we have, I know we're talking about 4.1 with the base salary, but now we're at the pay increases. Again, and again, I would agree, we're all kind of saying the same thing. And I have no doubt, the emphasis of academic achievement and data is where all of us want to go. And I think that's where the, this, that, I know that my intent for this contract was very much going to be tied to that piece. But being reasonable on year one, that's going to be different than year two. And we have to be logical. And that, and even in my, well, I didn't go to too much discussion with Mr. with Mr. Connor during negotiations directly. We've had multiple conversations for other things. And I did highlight that, that that would be, I mean, that we're all looking at this in a fair and good faith way. So year one would not necessarily be, I would love it to be third grade scores are right, we have 72% proficiency or more, but it's more about, okay, what, what, what first steps need to happen in order for you to move things year two, year three? And so I would just say that I think that when we build out the accountability evaluation to Mr. Edwards' point, I think we have the opportunity to build in some additional elements when it comes to the pay increases. I just am not in support of it being automatically in, in there and then also having it tied to administration, because we want to empower that administrator to create their own accountability structures and measurement tools for their staff below them. So that, that would be my recommendation, that we not go that route. And then, but have the reassurances that, I mean, we're all saying it, that we're very eager to see a very fruitful discussion and evaluation tool that really sets him up for success. Mr. Edwards?
So perhaps just so that we can get off of this, that as we go into the second year, because I think that's the sticking point, what does the second year look like? We could say in the, in the document that it would not be less than the first year, but that we'd like the opportunity by, by a certain date, I would say by, by October 1 or November 1, that we open up for discussion what the second year could look like, but it wouldn't be less than the first year. So that way, we have an opportunity to really talk about what we said here. Can we reduce the annual incentive, but increase the margin of bonus for the second year? And that gives that, him the opportunity to earn even more money than what he's proposing here. Because that's my goal, is that the second and the third year looks even better than what we're discussing here. And how do we get there? And it won't, wouldn't be less than the first year's compensation, but we'd like the opportunity to discuss how it could be better by October 1.
I can agree with that. But Dr., Dr., Mr. Duggan, how would we write that in? Or did you follow that? Because it would be, we're talking, we're talking 2024. So after the evaluations concluded in November, well, prior to November 1, that's for the 23, 24?
I'd have to wordsmith it, but you know, you certainly can say, year one, this is the, you know, the base salary, we agree and, you know, at the, prior to the beginning of year two to discuss and, you know, to have an adjustment based on, you know, I guess, I don't know if you want to tie a trigger to that, you know, about, you know, accomplishing the year one goals were accomplished, or, you know, the, the performance evaluation was effective or highly effective, or however you're going to set that up. I mean, it's, that is to, remains to be seen how you're going to set up the evaluation structure.
Between the evaluation.
So, but that, there's a lot of ways to do that, but certainly we can write language in there for, to reopen the negotiation on an annual basis, if that's the desire of the board.
Reopening, I would, I think, again, I think a lot of this can be solved in the evaluation tool or conversation by that each year in increments. And again, my component, okay, so that, that's a very healthy base salary. I mean, if we look at the comps and that 30,000 or 20,000 is a very substantial bonus, which would be equivalent to what perhaps, you know, a raise would be given elsewhere. But this is being differently tied. And then with the evaluation tool, I think, I mean, if you put something that this year two, as if it aligns with the evaluation tool, would be more than what year one is outside of that, I think. And I think we can build that in the evaluation.
Yeah, we can. Just, you know, I have to put some thought into how exactly to set that up, but we certainly can come up with a structure where year two and year three is discussion. And really, the way this contract's written anyway, you always can reopen the negotiations and have a discussion if you think that it's warranted. So maybe you even just leave it at that. But that's, that's totally up to this group. I don't have a strong preference. Like I said, it, you know, what any three of you want to do, we can do.
Mrs. Rose?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I feel like at the same time that we're going to all learn a lot with the potential of this incoming superintendent to move instruction, that we're putting the cart before the horse. I like re opener. I like renegotiate and to bring us together for a common agreement of what we all want. So.
Well, and the other thing is if you leave a generic, I mean, who knows what the future holds. In 2019, who knew that COVID was coming, right? You know, the financial conditions could change. There are many variables that we don't know about. So maybe less is more, but you know, willingness in good faith to engage in discussions on an annual basis is sufficient. But again, totally up to you all.
And yeah, that's exactly right. I mean, I would say, I concur with what you just said. So, but just to clarify, so then it sounds like there, that, that, DP, oh, no, the pay increases will not, we would not be adding that. I just want to make sure you have clarity and direction.
So I think what I'm hearing from the group is that it not be automatic, but that we agree to
Discuss, negotiate each year.
Instead, have annual discussion about compensation.
Yeah. Okay. Got your notes?
Yep.
Okay, good. So then we are on 4.2.
Yeah. So like I said, when you look at compensation around the state, every kind of package is put together, like the puzzle's made a little bit differently in each place. Some people like higher base salary and, you know, less deferred compensation. Obviously, the benefit of tax deferred compensation is you lower your IRS hit each year at a hefty salary, you know, and the benefit for that for the district is that is not part of the base salary. So that doesn't have a multiplier effect on things like the severance and things like that. So there's two ways you can do that within this. You can have a percentage of base salary. That was discussed with the parties. To keep the cost down as salary goes up, we decided to have a flat fee of the $15,000 here. But why I mention that is, you know, if we're at 255, now we're at 270. So that is cost to the district. It's just, it gets into how you structure these things.
And just, and I can't recall, but this was something that when we talked about kind of a lump sum, we were obviously started lower than 300,000, but we did give some flexibility of
Sure.
if they wanted to see it on a base salary versus or deferred comp. So.
Yeah. So we actually, we started without tax deferred comp in there. That was at the request of Mr. Connor, which is common around the state. It's not some, you know, novel idea or whatever. But, you know, obviously we adjusted the scale, you know, we put in the, the tax deferred compensation and we lowered the, the, you know, the annual base salary correspondingly to that.
Okay.
And frankly, we started at a lower level than what you have on paper here. You know, each time they came back with what I'll call asks, we did, you know, not just automatically do what they wanted, but we thoughtfully increased our offer every single time they came back and continued to do everything we could to get Mr. Connor in here. I know everyone's excited to have him. And, you know, I know we, we were too. So.
Thank you. Mrs. Rose?
Thank you. And I'm going to have to apologize. I just have to back up to Mr. Duggan's summary of the pay raise piece and just validate that we are on the same page of that, where I was looking at it, and this is just dialogue, that year one, it was what the administrators would get in the following years to be negotiated as we work out what this whole picture looks like. And/or are we just moving to no raise other than negotiated? I was under the impression through the round of communication that year one would be what was in print. And as we developed an evaluation and we walk through the accountability pieces and how he functions and leads and the transparency of data, that we would start to shift and negotiate that. So I'm just looking for clarification on everyone of what their intent was when they had the renegotiate, re opener piece.
Any comments? Mr. Edwards?
Yeah, I have, sorry. Year one is 255 and, and the bonus. And then the second year, the incremental increase was to be discussed in conjunction with a bonus.
That, that, yes. And I would support that. Man, my voice is going. Are there any other comments? I saw nodding of heads, but I just want to make sure. Okay.
Well, I mean, those are two different things, I guess. So which, you know, obviously, what does the group want to do?
No. Well, I, I'll clarify and say if I'm right. What was presented was, outside of now, that's 255 plus the $30,000, $20,000 bonus, although I still think, okay, but fine. But the bonus, and that is it. The raise will not, there's no guarantee of any kind of raise tied to any administrators or what have you. That's the incentive package for year one. And then evaluation tool comes forward and then of which in that we will build upon a future incremental opportunity, once we have an idea of where we're going.
No, I understand. So, but what I think I'm hearing is
Striking.
Chair Ziegler and Mr. Edwards saying, I think, the same thing.
Yes.
And Ms. Rose saying something different. And then two other people
Need to chime in.
Who haven't weighed in.
I'm with Mrs., like I said, with Ms., because actually I was looking at it, okay, at the end of the first year, then look at it, then you could actually give them a little bit, but not tied into whatever the administrators are making. But I think that at the end of the day, the first year is just based on the contract and then a part of the evaluation tool. So that's kind of where I'm at.
Which one?
Explain.
So consistent with Ms. Ziegler or Mr. Edwards, or consistent with Ms. Rose?
At that point too, within the contract, and also at any point, we could always say, hey, you did such a great job. We could open up and give you what the administrators got also.
Yeah, there's nothing
Even after the first year, we could also do that based upon the direction and everything that's going, heading into the second, but ultimately that the bonuses, the bonus piece is there.
And if I may, there's nothing that prevents us from doing it. It's just not guaranteeing it essentially. So was, you were saying where Mr. Edwards and I are at is where you were agreeing with. Okay. Mrs. Marinelli?
I, I need a little bit of clarification because we're talking 20, the 20,000, but Mrs. Ziegler, you said 30,000 that you would like. Is that with the salary, Mrs. Ziegler, at the 255? You're looking at the 30,000 bonus?
I'd like the bonus to be high because I think it sets a message and sets the tone of where we're going. I don't, I think I'm outnumbered on that. And so I'm not going to favor it.
No, no, I'm just saying, is that with the 255?
I would, I would like to see the bonus still remain substantial for a lot of reasons. Again, I think it sets the tone. I need to make sure we can afford it.
I understand that.
But, but my understanding is that the 255, so yes, to answer your point, my, my contention would be that the, that the bonus pot be substantial. I wouldn't, I would prefer to see it not be decreased, even if you, if the board, if the majority board wants to increase the base guarantee, I would still be in favor of keeping the bonus substantial. If, but I heard other people, so I don't think we're there anymore, but that's where I was standing. So does that answer your question? I believe that, and please correct me if I'm wrong to my fellow board members, but it sounded as though the more than others wanted to see a base salary of 255 and to reduce what the, what Mr. Connor's request was essentially, satisfying his request. He wanted, he seeks to raise the base salary to 255 with the understanding that the potential to earn a maximum bonus of 30,000 will be reduced to a maximum of 20,000. It sounded like Mrs. Rose, and I don't want to speak for anyone, Mr. Edwards was in favor of that, and Mr. Enos was in favor of that. Is that clarified?
This is, yes and no. I, I think a simple yes would have clarified if we're looking at, I was just trying to clarify, you were okay with going to 255 and keeping the 30% bonus?
I was, yes.
That, that's, okay, that's 30%, 30, 30,000. Thank you, Ms. Rose. That's what I, so yes, okay.
But, but I think that, to my notes, and we can go back and rewind the tape, I thought that the majority of you wanted to go to 255, but reduce the bonus correspondingly per Mr. Connor's request to 20,000. That's where I thought we landed with the, the majority of this group.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
But I, because I might be different in the future. I just wanted to get clarification.
Sure. And then what I think I'm hearing now, the second component of this is to not go with the request that Mr. Connor made, but to do something different than what the district and Mr. Connor are asking. And that would be to keep year one with the 255 with up to 20 in bonus and with year two discussion that the salary will no less than year one, but you know, reopening language to have an ongoing discussion of what the compensation will be. Is that correct of this?
So no raise in year one, at the end of year one? Yeah. Is that what the?
The contract.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you for that clarity.
So there, there would be no raise? Or are we looking at?
There's no raise built in, in the contract?
But
For year one?
But there's also, I'm sorry, there's also no real, there's no negotiation to make one until year two. I
That's where I want, we need to drill down to, because I don't want him to not have any kind of compensation on year one, when he's going to be working very hard to meet all of our objectives and then taking the staff with him. So that's, that was my second question, yes or no? First year, is he going to get 20, 20,000? Or is he, along with the 255,000, is that a yes or no? Or is he going to get the 255 and the, whatever the instructional staff and other administrators get for the first year? And the second year, we start building up what Mr. Edwards and Ms. Ziegler were talking about.
So my understanding, again, we can, and please, by all means
I just need
Clarify. I think it's a, I think it's a good question. My understanding was, correct me if I'm wrong, that year one compensation would be at the 255,000 annual base salary with up to the opportunity to earn up to $20,000 in bonus based on accomplishing goals and measurable metrics. Year two, we would agree to, you know, have a, you know, an increase with the possibility that there is an annual increase and the opportunity to have a bonus as well. You know, a re opener language to agree to discuss compensation year two, and then obviously when we get to year three, year three. Is that what the will of this board is? Because I think that's what I, I think that's what emerged out of this really productive dialogue, was that that's the majority place of, on each of these issues amongst yourselves here.
I know, Mrs. Rose on here, but yes, that's how I read it. But that, a lot of that would be diced out and through the evaluation process. So that's where contractually, there would not be something written there where he would be guaranteed a raise in the first year that's tied to anything necessarily with, you know, tied to administrator, what have you. But that in the evaluation process and tool, we'll be building into that for year two and three, because we're highlighting what those goals are.
Okay. And so Mr., I'm going to ask Mr. Enos and Mr. Edwards, is that your, is that where you want to be too, tying year two and year three to the performance evaluation?
So year one is exactly what it says, that he is earning 255 with an incentive in year one, at the completion of year one, to earn a potential of $20,000. So that's year one.
Okay.
And the potential $20,000 is what we're going to be all talking about once he gets here of what are the agreed upon metrics of how he can earn all of that $20,000. So that it would be 255 plus 20, which would make it 275. Okay. So that's year one. When we start talking about the evaluation metrics, it's a great opportunity to start having that conversation about what year two and year three looks like. And that, at that time, do we want to say there's no increase in base salary, but the bonus goes from 20,000 to 40,000 or 50,000 if you earn these benchmarks? Or do we say, whatever we give the administrators, you get 50% of, whatever we decide, and a greater bonus plan? But it's hard, I just want, that was the point of that conversation, that year one is a maximum of 275, and that we're giving him an opportunity to earn more than 275 in second and third year, based upon if we decide there's an incremental base salary raise and a better bonus package. So it just flows in that process. I hope that
Yeah, now that makes sense. I guess
You said it much, you were much more eloquently. So thank you.
So, but I guess my, is that where you are at Chair Ziegler and Board Member Enos as well? as well?
That is where I, yes, that is correct, yes.
Yes, because I also look at it as a tool that during that first year, that you can set it for those bars, that he could attain it to be able to receive that compensation, because he's working towards that. So, that's what I'm, so yes, so the end of the day is, you can't sit there and say that we have to be number one in the state, and we have to be at 90% reading, he never would accomplish it, but we can put in there that he would be able to get that bonus from doing exactly what we're looking for to be able to start. It doesn't necessarily have to be tied to stuff. So, that's what I'm, so that's where I'm at also, in that, because it's also, there's also more to the package he gets. He gets a 15,000 comp, he also gets a car allowance, he also gets, so there's a lot more in there, so he's just not making 255. So, he's making a lot more than 255 with the compensation package. Ultimately, it comes to three, like I said, it could come up to 310, which would put us above, or a lot of other counties, because in Sarasota, I think that we deserve the best. So, that's the way I was looking at it, as a performance, true performance base, if not just tied into an automatic pay raise.
Well, just to that point, you know, we, this board gave us authorization to 300, so, again, there was a little wiggle room, we got to 310, but at some point, these discussions had to happen here, because we were outside of the authorization that this board gave, once we kind of put the puzzle together with all of these components.
Mrs. Rose?
Thank you. I'm thankful for the clarification, because I don't feel we've had it of, the conversation, the dialogue has been great, but the, exactly what it means in bringing this contract to potential fruition. So, I, I like what I feel Mr. Enos just said, which is different than what I believed was happening, because I have an issue with where we're going, to some extent of, to no raise whatsoever. If I hear Mr. Enos correctly, and if Mr. Edwards is leaning in this direction, that the first year, that the intent is for the 20,000 to be a viable plan to get us in a growth mode, almost assuring that if we're all in agreement in what we believe he's going to bring to our district, that that 20,000 is going to almost act as if a raise, as if it's a raise. So, I think how this is put, if that is indeed what I feel like I'm hearing, at least I did for Mr. Enos, then I'm comfortable with not having a built in raise. Otherwise, I'm, I'm looking that, you know, we're operating different than the past, and strangely, from an educational standpoint. So, where, where are we? Are we with where Mr. Enos indicated? And then year two changes based on the metrics and the evaluation? I see Mr. Enos nodding his head up and down, because that I'm okay with.
Mr. Edwards?
From my perspective, a bonus package is not a guarantee if it's connected to incentives. And so, what my intent would be, which I'm open to discuss, my intent would be that the, the goals within the first year to obtain the 20,000 are reasonable, very reasonable, very reasonable.
That's been the.
So that it's pretty close to a guarantee of, and I don't, but, but the whole idea of changing the culture and understanding stretch goals and incentives, is that this is the, if you will, that bridge between, and, and that we as a board with Mr. Connor discuss what the goals are and the stretch goals for year two and year three. So, I don't want to say it's a guarantee, because I just think that's a mistake for the culture that we're trying to adjust. So, that, that's really where I'm coming from, but I'm not looking to have incredible stretch goals for that $20,000 that makes it unattainable for the first year, that any superintendent, no matter who we hired, could never achieve, because it takes a long time to get those plans in and start seeing results. So, I hope that clarifies my intent, and I think we're kind of saying the same thing about trying to get as close to a guarantee of that $20,000 as possible with quantifiable goals that we would agree on with Mr. Connor when he got here.
Yes. And that was why, when we started this, I wanted to highlight, because when we're talking about bonuses, it is different and unique in, in educational institutions, but I think we have the human capital to do it, and I think it is a benefit to change us towards that. But you're understanding, anyone who's new and, and coming in, taking time to hit certain goals, so when we have this open discussion about what year one goals are, that they would be very much reasonable to attain, but they'll be in direct correlation to the direction to be able to move us to year two, year three. And then I think that really sets the tone of everyone working together to really achieve those goals. So, I don't think, I think that's a good distinction. It's not guaranteed, but if you were to look at it as a $20,000 highly achievable raise, but it's a bonus. Mrs. Rose?
And how does that go into print?
As it is right now.
I, I think as written, it just, you all have to be thoughtful come October, when you come up with the metrics and the measurable metrics, and the goals upon which accomplishment will trigger the bonus.
Yeah, he wrote bonus.
All right, yeah. That's the, what you're actually stating, what will go into, I think it's legitimate for me to ask what the verbiage is.
Yeah, I mean, I, we, I will have to wordsmith it and obviously present it back to you, but my, what I'm hearing you all say is that year one, the base salary would be $255,000 guaranteed, with the ability to earn up to an additional $20,000 maximum in incentive based bonus, to be determined based on the accomplishment of goals and measurable metrics that the parties agree to this October, after Mr. Connor has the opportunity to kind of have a couple months under his belt and to assess what's going on here. And what I'm hearing the rest of the group say is that the intent of this group, at least for year one, is to make the bonuses more reasonably earned than less reasonably earned, with the idea that it is still a bonus, that has to be earned, but the, the, the standards upon which you will agree to are, you know, reasonably obtainable.
And, if I may, we're not getting.
But I don't know that all that.
We're not putting it in the contract.
No, that doesn't need to go in the contract. But I guess, I just want to articulate what I think I'm hearing from you all. I think as written, we, we are at that place. So, I don't know that anything else needs to be changed in the contract to get there, but I think you all can be thinking about how you want to make those goals and measurable metrics appear. You know, that's up to you all come October.
And just for clarification, I'm not asking for anything to be changed, I'm validating how it will read, and thank you for that clarification validation.
Okay, so now, I know, so that's 4.1. 4.2, Mr. Duggan had talked briefly about it, and I know we need to go back for clarification, so I'm glad that we got that. 4.2 is the tax deferred compensation. Was there any additional discussion on that? Can we move forward, or is there any? Okay, very good. 4.3, Mr. Duggan?
So, 4.3 has to do with insurance benefits, health, dental, vision, and disability. Now, as a benefit to all of our employees, including the superintendent, you know, the district generously offers employees, you know, employer contributions to health plans. So, I can tell you, I provided what those plans look like to Mr. Connor's counsel, and in, in my looking at them, the employee portion of that, if you're just a single employee, you have your health care covered. Obviously, if you're married, there's an additional employee contribution that you make, and if you're married with a family, there is an additional contribution made beyond what the employer guarantees. And in looking at the ranges, so obviously, Mr. Edwards, or I'm sorry, Mr. Edwards, Mr. Connor, pardon me. You want to be the superintendent? Pardon me. No, Mr. Connor, as I understand, has a family, so I presume he would want the family coverage. Maybe that's an assumption I shouldn't be making, but that's my presumption, because he has a family. And in looking at the ranges, obviously, we have various plans at the district that range in health care from.
It was 770, it was about 650 all the way up to 1558, so we went into the middle.
Yeah, so, so we tried to come up with a way to, again, put the jigsaw puzzle together with total compensation, and we came up with $1,000 per month that we would give Mr. Connor a stipend for health, dental, vision, family coverage, and then he can obviously pick what plan he wants to choose, but that he would get the full amount no matter what, and so that might, you know, mean that he has to contribute a little bit more if he has the Cadillac plan, but that that was reasonable. But no, $1,000 a month obviously would be 12,000 more dollars on top of the annuity, on top of the base salary.
Right. And then, again, if you had the maximum plan with family, it's about, if I remember, it's 18,600, and then this is 12, or, but again, that's the maximum, highest one, et cetera. So, trying to find some wedge in between it, but also not because of the maximum 300,000, that was where we found kind of a soft, a sweet spot.
Well, and as I understand, the, the dental and the vision plans are similar to the health plan in that way, where there's different programs you can opt into, you know, and that have different costs. And then, I think everybody, there's a disability plan that everybody is, that just applies to the employee only, that doesn't impact your family.
And he was agreeable to.
And he was agreeable to this language as is.
Any other comments on that? Are you guys okay with that? I don't see any, okay, perfect. And then moving on to then, the life insurance, is that?
So, the next, the next part is life insurance. We have agreed to provide a life insurance policy of up to $50,000. I can tell you, that was the exact language from Dr. Aspen's contract. That was something, again, as we had a lot of dialogue back and forth, each time, we incrementally increased what we were willing to offer to Mr. Connor, and this is the latest one from just yesterday. I can tell you, I looked into the cost, it's a nominal cost, I think it's a no brainer, gives him, you know, his family a little bit more protection, and so we, we decided we agreed to that request just yesterday. So, that language has been added only in the last 24 hours.
Correct, okay. And any comments, concerns, questions, maybe move on? I don't see any, and then stop me if, if I don't get you quick enough. 4.5 is the automobile expenses?
Okay, so in looking at the superintendent contracts around the state, and frankly, other, you know, appointed governmental officials, you know, whether it's county administrators or university presidents, or, you know, the like, it was fairly common to have an automobile allowance included into the compensation. Now, the benefit to that is, it's not a part of the base salary, so that doesn't, you know, impact the severance, or, you know, those other type of things, as the base salary goes up. This was, there's a range, some people are as high as 1,000, some people are as low as a couple hundred dollars, this was kind of right in the middle. We thought this was reasonable at $700 a month. Mr. Connor's agreeable to that amount as well. So, and that comes out to another $8,400, you know, as part of putting the total compensation package together.
Is that acceptable to everyone? Good, 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 okay. Moving on then to 4.6, 4.7.
Okay, just if I could, so all of the things we've talked about now add up to $280,000 with, again, with the ability to, so I'm sorry, I guess now that if we're going to go to 255, it would be 290 guaranteed, with the ability to earn another 20 in bonus, so up to 310 compensation. Those are the hard costs. You'll see as we talk through, there are some other softer costs that I didn't, that are probably hard to quantify, so, but I just, I point that out. So, provision of technology, you know, we've agreed to provide him a work cellphone, government issued, government issued tablet, laptop, desktop, the tools of the trade, very common in this, you know, for us to provide an executive level employee with these things.
Which I think should be required.
Yeah, and frankly, there's a lot of benefit from the public record standpoint of having people use government issued devices, because, you know, a high profile employee like the superintendent, like, is making public records, and sometimes those get requested, so.
Very good. 4.7?
Okay, 4.7, like any employee, he should be reimbursed for his expenses, we have policies and procedures on that. So, of course, like any other employee, he can be reimbursed.
And to the credit, this is, I mean, these are important notes when we look at this, there was a flat fee, and then other, there were a couple different components, but he.
Sure. So, the initial version of the, of the discussions included just a flat monthly fee. The thought process there was, this is the superintendent, he needs to be not tracking his miles, because that takes time to do the paperwork necessary. To Mr. Connor's credit, which I give him credit for, he agreed that we will take that out in exchange of kind of some of the bartering of how we're going to put the puzzle with this compensation together. So, to his credit, he said, no, I'll just go by, you know, with whatever the normal reimbursement is, and, you know, you know, things like travel and things like that would be included in that.
Yes, I wanted to highlight that, okay. 4.8?
So, 4.8 is professional organizations. You know, of course, we would expect a superintendent to participate in organizations that will foster his professional growth, community type things. What those are is up to this board. So, but we have it set up where if he does participate in those, and with the board's approval, he can be reimbursed for the expenses of those things. And again, he would submit it, and that would get approved at the board level, and then we would reimburse him for those expenses.
Any comments? Looking good, okay. 4.9, FRS?
Okay, 4.9, FRS. Obviously, there's different tiers of the FRS and different programs within the different tiers of the FRS. You know, he would go in as a senior management level, which is customary for superintendents. I think frankly, you have to do that. I don't even know that there is any flexibility on it, but he would go in at the senior management level, and obviously, we, our employees participate in the state retirement system, including him.
Excuse me, don't see any comments or questions. Moving on to 4.10, reimbursement.
Okay, so reimbursement for moving expenses, we can't wait for Mr. Connor to get here and get started. So, this is a, we, we have agreed to pay up to $15,000 in moving expenses, you know, we're recruiting him to come here, we're seeking that he come. That comes at a cost to move his family and relocate, so we have included moving expenses. Now, that's not part of the $290,000 calculation, that's just, I guess, more compensation year one that he'll get, but I, I want to be clear, that, that was not a part of that discussion, we just agreed to do that, we thought that was the right thing to do. You know, if he's willing to come, we, we're going to pay him to move his stuff here.
So, we look good there. Five, I think we discussed, pretty lengthy, but just to review it one more time, Mr. Duggan.
Okay, so, no, again, 5.1 is, this is the section that relates back to 3.1, and it basically just says, if you satisfy the goals that the board comes up with each October, then, you know, there is a bonus component, and I think what I've heard here today is that we're going to increase the annual base by 10,000 and correspondingly reduce the maximum 30,000 to 20,000. Okay? Section six is leave, two days per month vacation, one day per month sick, you know, those can be accrued and used and have a cash value consistent with, you know, board policies. And then 6.3 is different, it's just five additional days of personal leave. Those can be, those are more use it or lose it, no cash value, no rollover, and that is similar to what Dr. Aspen had, in case you're curious, and looking around the state, I'd say more than, from, from my, from what I saw, more people had personal days than didn't, but, you know, that's certainly a perk that we have extended in the past.
And we added, then that's something that, again, to move things forward, that was something they.
And that was something they asked for, that was not originally part of the offer, that we agreed to include as a way to, you know, lure Mr. Connor here, which we're all excited to have, so. Legal holidays, you know, the same as other district employees, and then 6.5 unpaid days. You know, people work on 240 day contracts, I think some on 251 day contracts, I don't, but that has a payroll implication when calculating what's called the daily rate of pay. You know, you generally, depending on where you are in the calendar year, you can either be ahead or behind, and if you leave prior to the end of the year, there can be an adjustment in the compensation, as I'm told by payroll, and I'm by no means a payroll expert, the only day you're trued up and even is on June 30th, otherwise, you're ahead or behind, based on, you know, they prorate the pay, so that you get more or less equal paychecks, but there are different, based on when those unpaid days accrue, you're either ahead or behind, so if you leave prior to the end of the year, there can be an adjustment based on when those unpaid days happen. So, what we have put in there is just the unpaid days will be compensated in the same way as other administrators.
Thank you. No comments there? I think we're good.
Okay, section seven is, you know, if Mr. Connor has some type of professional speaking engagements that he is able to do, whether for compensation or not, that he's entitled to do that, so long as they don't conflict with his superintendent duties or interfere with them, and that he uses his personal time to do that, and that he gets board approval for those.
Which is, that's a standard boilerplate.
Pretty standard, and he's agreeable to that language. Section eight is kind of similar to section three, right, where there is a discussion component, and so what we have said is, in August, no later than August 30th, you know, the board and Mr. Connor will sit down and have a discussion about how the parties are going to communicate with one another. have a discussion about how the parties are gonna communicate with one another, we thought establishing a communication protocol first, before we got into a discussion of what the measurables will be, would be productive, so, you know, you obviously set up how we're gonna communicate, and before we communicate, so, we thought that was worthwhile, and just good governance to insert that type of language, you know, to kind of set the rules of the game, from the very beginning.
Yeah, I have to say, this is not something you see oftentimes, but I do love this idea, kind of setting the rules of the road for everyone, so that there's clarity and no confusion.
Okay, next section is the term, the various ways to terminate the contract, hopefully that won't happen, but, you know, obviously, we have to prepare for the possibility that we could have a separation, and so there's various categories here, so I'll go through them one by one, termination without cause is based on just a majority of the board at a notice public meeting, that's pretty standard, that it's a majority, some places have supermajorities, and, in fact, Palm Beach actually says you need to have five out of seven people, but then they offer no severance, so again, it's just, all of these things kind of go together, but if you terminate for cause, we have it set up where a severance will be provided, and that leads me into section 9.2, which is an area that remains unagreed to at this point, so I look for guidance from the board on this, so there's two schools of thought here, you know, at the superintendent level around the state, and looking to the extent there is a marketplace or a kind of standard, so I looked at the 10 contracts, eight of them had 20 weeks guaranteed severance, I can tell you, I've looked at county administrator contracts, it's pretty standard, I've looked at university presidents, pretty standard for 20 weeks, our neighbor to the north, Manatee, did not have a guaranteed 20 weeks, they had up to 20 weeks, and again, that's somebody who was coming from a different community, so I throw that out there, and then Palm Beach, like I said, they have a harder, like a higher standard to remove without cause, but then they offer no severance, so there's different ways to do this, I would say, the industry standard is the 20 weeks, what we have proposed for this board is to stagger it, where there is no severance for the first six months, so obviously, three-year contract, no severance for the first six months, first six months, for months seven to 12, there would be between six weeks up to 10 weeks, and then in the second half, the last 18 months of the contract, it would be between 10 weeks to 20 weeks, now, to give context, I didn't calculate it at 255, but obviously, it would be a little bit higher, but at 245, six weeks is about $28,000 severance, 10 weeks is about $47,000 in severance, and then the full 20 weeks would be about $94,000 in severance, so, I look for guidance, and there's, there's two parts to this, so there is, how much severance does this board want to grant, and then the second part of this is, my suggestion would be to tie the receipt of severance to having a release obtained by the superintendent, I think that's a best HR practice, right, what you're doing in that situation, from a, from an employment standpoint, on the management side, is you are paying severance and buying certainty from legal liability later, so typically, the management side pays compensation, and the employee gives a release of liability, so that leads into the second part of the second part of this, and just so we can have a global conversation on this, Mr. Connor seeks a mutual release of liability, you know, that's certainly something that could be agreed to at the time, I don't think that's an HR best practice to, at the outset, have mutual release of liability, I think the more customary practice, from my experience, and this is private and public sector, is to have, if to the extent there is a severance, it's tied to one-sided payment and one-sided release of liability, although, it's not, it's not out of the question to have mutual release of liability, I don't think it's the standard, but that certainly is up to this board, that's the request of Mr. Connor, is to have a mutual release, and what that would mean is, we, we pay him severance upon termination without cause, and we would release one another, he would release us from liability, we would release him from liability, that's a decision for this board to make, and I'm happy to discuss hypotheticals or whatever within that, but that is the discussion on severance, I would say there is not a lot of consensus between the parties on this particular point, and I, like I said, I look for guidance from you all on this.
Thank you, I'm gonna start off just really quickly and highlight, and so this is, as a kind of mediator of taking what I've experienced as a board member, and both on settlement packages, and also just term, I guess, all of them, or walkway packages, if you have, obviously, this is not something you want to deal with, but it's just trying to take the best of both worlds, and what I was thinking of is having that scale, just based on time, and just to clarify, statutory maximum is 20 weeks, and that, that having on the latter end of the contract, that it would be guaranteed 10 and up to 20, just doesn't lock the board in, whoever that may be at the time, or what have you, I guess it would be us, but that, it doesn't force that, and I can just, and again, this is not to put this under the individual, it's just about a practice, and what is a balanced approach for the taxpayers, the district, and the board, there are times when, if a board sees that there needs to be a change, and perhaps it's not, doesn't rise to the level of their willingness to terminate for cause, because there's a cost of defense oftentimes involved, or what have you, but there may be reasons of which have really pushed that decision to occur, to guarantee 20 weeks may not be fair, or in the best business practice where you could say, we are going to give you, you know, we're going to terminate without cause with a severance of 12 weeks, or 15 weeks, or whatever that is, so you have some of those flexibilities, because, again, you want to think of it as the best situation, but sometimes it is not, but to avoid going down the for cause aspect, because it's almost a guarantee, many people don't do it, because they want to avoid the cost of defense, and so, this merely was an opportunity to provide some leeway, but, again, this wasn't something we discussed, and I didn't want to, so that, that's, this is largely why we would have this opportunity to discuss it here, but based on my experience, this, I feel like balances it out based on time, and certainly gives that flexibility to the board, based on the circumstance at hand, hopefully, not ever needing to be used, Mrs. Rose.
No, thank you, Madam Chair, do I understand you correctly, Mr. Duggan, to say that the 20 weeks is the standard?
Yeah, well, I will tell you, so, the discussion I had with Mr. Connor's counsel is that they looked at 17 contracts, and at least the 17 they looked at, it was the 20 weeks for everybody throughout the term of the contract, I can tell you, I looked at 10, and out of the eight, or out of the 10, I looked at eight had that provision as well, so I would say that that is much more likely than not to be included in a contract.
So, I can conclude from what you've said, that the standard is the 20 weeks, given the eight out of 10 that you have given us as examples of, for our purposes of this dialogue, I'm in agreement with his ask in that, I don't feel comfortable asking a, recruiting someone to move here with their family and changing that standard, I'm in agreement with the 20 weeks as one board member.
Thank you, Mr. Enos?
Yes, and I, and I thank the Chair, Ms. Igler, for what she did, in trying to look at that as in regard to the termination, and trying to do a variable scale, but I also would look at is that if the standard, based on the Florida State statute, it's the 20 weeks, that I also, to be able to bring somebody in here to give them, as we've talked about, a little bit of, you know, to give them that job security, that they would know they've uprooted their family, I know he has got, I think, four children, to be able to come down here, and I believe that I'm in favor of the 20 weeks, as well as I am not in favor on the mutual release, as the industry standard, as counsel has made the recommendation, that the industry standard is that we, we would pay him, and the release on this one-sided, I wouldn't do the mutual release, because obviously, there was reasoning for the termination without cause, so, I'm in favor of the 20 weeks, but not in favor of the mutual release.
Well, if I may, just one more point on that, I'm getting ahead here, but if you were to flip down, and we'll get to this in a moment, 10.5 is indemnification, it's a related concept that's separate, but indemnification essentially means that if the superintendent gets sued within the scope of his employment, then we would cover the costs, so long as he's not engaging in gross negligence, and acting outside the scope of his employment, or acting and committing willful misconduct, those type of things, that's a related concept to release, mutual release, so I think that the best practice would be obtain, insist on obtaining release, not insist on mutual release, in the event, at a separation, you wanted to do it, you of course could include mutual release at the time, what we're talking about here is guaranteeing it in advance now, but I think that there is protections that we have written into this contract that include for indemnification, that do protect him from the exposure of lawsuits, if you're curious about that.
Thank you, Mrs. Marinelli.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I just have a clarification question, or to make sure that it is covered in here, I, I am in agreement with the 20 weeks, and I'll go with legal counsel's recommendation on the severance, but if for some reason, which I hope it won't be, that we do go with the termination without cause, we would specifically put in there what days that includes, and what days it doesn't, so we are real clear of, so we wouldn't have what happened, what's hap, what has happened in the past.
Sure, understood.
Am I making my-
Yep.
Okay.
So, Ms. Marinelli?
That would be in there.
I guess what we're saying is that it would, based on the calculation, that we'd have something in there based on our HR's calculation in reference to the actual 20 weeks of paid severance.
Of what days that-
Yeah, and it really, as I understand it, they, they basically, it's an unusual way this is done in education, but I understand it's done everywhere in education, or most places, is they calculate what's called the daily rate of pay, because you get into these, this concept of paid days and unpaid days, based on, you know, historically, not, educators often not working the full 12 months like a typical employee would, my understanding is they calculate the daily rate of pay, and that's how they generate these calculations, and so we've included that in section, whatever section we just discussed, and just, it would be treated as, we would calculate those numbers the same as any other employee.
We added language in it so that there was no ambiguity, and that we avoid any misinterpretation. No worries, Mr. Edwards?
Yes, I, I think that it's important that we go to the 20 days for the obvious reasons, 20 weeks, sorry, for the obvious, the mutual agreement, I think the part that, in citing your example of why we wouldn't want to do that, I think from my perspective, and my fiduciary responsibility, is that doing a mutual agreement upfront like that is not in the best interest in the event that there's something criminal attached, that, and I think if we spell that out, you know, I don't know, you know, you're the lawyer, but to make sure that Mr. Connor realizes that we're, we're not being difficult, but if he did something really horrible that causes us, you know, to be sued, and/or there's a substantial loss to our organization, that we have a recourse, and I think that's reasonable.
I think it's reasonable too, and that's, of course, no one has any reason to suspect Mr. Connor, any different than anybody else, I think it's just a best HR practice to not include a mutual release, because of the element of the unknown, God forbid there was like a fraud, or an embezzlement, or something like that, that was not clear, that later became clear, I would think, as a, you know, fiduciary over tax dollars, that you would need to, for the citizens, not have the mutual release, that would hamper the ability, in the event that that, the very unlikely event that those things happened, you know, to be able to take the proper steps of recourse without tying your hands.
And, and it's important to know, a lot, some of these things that we've mentioned, if it's in the contract, it's guaranteed to be one way or the other, that's not to say that at the end of a separation, there, and the terms are not such that it puts additional exposure to the district, that you can have a mutually agreed upon-
Yeah, and for example, we, we, our former superintendent, we had a mutual release with, so, it's not uncommon, it's not prohibited, what we're talking about now is guaranteeing it under all circumstances at the beginning, without knowing whatever situational facts lead to the termination at the time, and that's why I think it would, you know, you, it's up to you, but I, if, from an employment law standpoint, I wouldn't tie your hands in that way.
If I'm not mistaken, I think, I think everyone's okay with that, is that correct, with the not including the mutual release, is everyone okay with that?
Okay, and then, just to clarify also, because I think that's step two, but step one is, we would insist upon as part of payment of severance, that a release be obtained?
Yes.
Okay, I think that's a best practice also, okay.
He's writing down his notes.
Okay, the next section is 9.3, termination for cause, so, 9.1 is termination without cause, that's just, you know, at a notice meeting, the board can decide, you know, based on a majority vote, to, you know, replace the superintendent, and then that comes with the severance, right, so there is a compensation as part of just you guys having a different approach that you want to take, termination for cause is basically termination based on misconduct, right, and so there are a number of ways you can commit misconduct, you know, obviously, under DOE rules, and statute, and, you know, breaching the contract, and things like that, so, there, I think there, you know, the principle is professional conduct, those type of things, I think this is pretty standard type of termination for cause stuff in the superintendent world, so there's not anything in here, from my perspective, and again, I don't, I don't speak for Mr. Connor, who's not here, so, and I don't, I don't intend to, but from my perspective, there's nothing in here that is, you know, kind of pushing the envelope on what is customary, and, and I will tell you that, you know, they, his counsel had the opportunity to review this, and didn't draw any problems with this language. Okay, next section is 9.4, upon termination of the agreement, what this basically means is that we'll provide health insurance in accordance with state and federal law, which essentially means provide COBRA, like we do to any other employee. Incapacity, so, in the event, God forbid, Mr. Connor comes and, you know, has some type of temporary or permanent injury, you know, that causes him to be out for a substantial amount of time, this is a part of the contract that talks about what that game plan would look like, and it says that if he's incapacitated for 30 days, that we have the right to appoint an interim superintendent, because obviously, we need to move on, and, you know, at least temporarily, have somebody performing the, the day-to-day operations of the district, and then it says if he is incapacitated for 90 consecutive days, that the board can, by a majority vote, terminate the agreement, you know, and without paying the severance payment, that's just a way to protect the district in the event he's not able to perform the, the job duties and responsibilities of the position, and there is some language in there about, you know, having a medical doctor evaluate him, so that it's not just arbitrary on our part, you know, and saying, oh, you're incapacitated, right, there's a, there's a, an objective metric that involves a physician evaluation, and of course, we would agree to keep that private, consistent with state and federal law. Okay, the next section's 9.6, has to do if Mr. Connor decides he wants to separate from us voluntarily, it would be 90 days' notice, and I think that would at least permit the time to find a suitable replacement, and to have a reasonable transition from Mr. Connor to whoever the next person would be. 9.7 is benefits upon retirement or death, you know, basically just outlines what happens in those two scenarios, usually, when, when a contract, when someone passes away, the, you know, you don't owe them anything else anymore, then, of course, 9.8 is common in every type of contract, mutual agreement, that basically means at any time, the parties can open up the, any part of the agreement, and, you know, discuss it, including 9.8 specifically, you can have a mutual parting of the ways, this would be where maybe you paid, you know, less or more severance, this would be maybe where you articulate things like non-disparagement and confidentiality, this would be, you know, perhaps where you would say, we'll keep you on as a consultant, you know, those type of things, but certainly, you have the ability, when the parties agree, to come up with something other than, you know, 9.1 through 9.7, and that just gives flexibility, it's pretty common in contracts to have this type of provision in employment contract. Section 10 is the last section, many people would say these are the type of things that are in every contract, I'm happy to walk through them specifically, obviously, the superintendent's performing the obligations in Sarasota, that basically means this is the place of performance, that he has to perform them here, I think statutorily, obviously, the schools are here, he has to live here anyway, sovereign immunity is like a nerdy legal topic, that places a statutory cap on damages when employees commit negligence- when employees commit negligence within the scope of their employment. I think the current state of the law is $200,000 per incident, $300,000 aggregate, and you have to include that language because if you don't include it, there's an argument to be made that when you do things like indemnifying, which we'll get to in a minute, you waive those caps when you say things like, we'll fully indemnify, you know, without putting those limitations in. So you kind of have to put those into contracts in the public sector. 10.3, no employment of family members. So that is, I think, a best practice to avoid nepotism-related issues. To Mr. Connor's credit, we have a nepotism policy here in the district, because again, a lot of times teachers, you know, meet and marry other teachers, you know? So you have to have, to some degree, we're not going to prohibit all employees from doing that. We have a policy in place that kind of takes some of those concepts into consideration. Typically though, when you get to the high level, you know, because of the power and authority that you're able to exert, that it can create conflicts of interest when you have close family members working and it almost makes them like a super employee sometimes. So to Mr. Connor's credit, he has agreed to not hire any of his family members. That being said, as I understand, and I don't know intimately his situation, but as I understand, his wife works for a textbook company and, you know, one of the big ones. I don't even know which one, but one of the big ones. And so we have written some language in there that basically says we can still buy that company's textbook if it goes through a transparent, reasonable, good faith, you know, procurement process. You know, we shouldn't, I didn't want to limit our educators from having the textbook that they think is the best one for our kids because his wife might work for that company. Obviously, we would take safeguards to make sure she's removed from that process. But no, we obviously want to not tie our own hands with what textbooks we can use, but have a thoughtful contemplation that, hey, you know, she works there and just as a, as an issue. So, does anybody have any questions about that? Okay, next section, no third parties, no third-party beneficiaries. It's standard in every contract that I've ever seen has language like this, and we're not doing anything here to create any rights to anybody other than the school district and to the Mr. Connor, right? There's no intended third parties that are, we're contracting to benefit here. Like I said earlier, indemnification, this kind of is consistent with the release language. You know, and where this is, this gives some protection to Mr. Connor in the event that he, because of performance of his duties, gets sued. It basically means that if he gets sued as part of his job within the scope of employment, so long as it's not things like gross negligence, willful misconduct, operating outside of his lawful authority, then he's not expected to cover his own legal expenses. He, you know, the district would cover the cost of his defense and his lawyer as part of that. 10.6, non-discrimination, pretty standard. We agree not to discriminate mutually, the parties. 10.7, entire agreement. What that means is that everything in this agreement would be contained in the four corners of this contract, that any, you know, prior discussions that happened on the side can't be used as what's called parole evidence to resolve ambiguities. That everything, the intent of the parties is the whole agreement is contained in this document, standard lawyer language. Amendments, basically says that at any time, and this is kind of similar to the termination upon mutual agreement, at any time you can open up the contract and, you know, agree by writing to, you know, to change any of these things. Agreement preparation, again, standard legalese, just basically says that the parties have had an opportunity to participate in the negotiations and that there's not any, what's the word I'm looking for? There's no presumption in favor of either party. It's just, you know, the, the document speaks for itself. 10.10's legal jargon. 10.11 is waiver against standard contract language, basically means that the parties can waive enforcement of different provisions and that doesn't, you know, forever stop them from, you know, enforcing that provision again. Governing law is, you know, we're gonna, obviously, in the event there's litigation, it would occur in Sarasota, it would be based on Florida law, standard contract language. Legal compliance, the parties agree to follow the law. Severability is standard legalese that says basically if any portion of this contract gets deemed unlawful or, you know, unconstitutional or something like that, then the rest of the contract, that only that portion of the contract is removed, the rest of the contract continues to apply. Mediation, what it basically says here is that in the event of dispute, the parties agree to mediate prior to going to court. Assignment, this is a prohibition on assigning the contract, again, legalese, but that basically means that Mr. Connor can't sign this contract and then assign his duties to like, you know, his coworker from Hillsborough or something like that. So he's the superintendent, he can't assign his right to be the superintendent to somebody else, and we couldn't assign it to a charter school, for example. That's what no assignment is. Force majeure has kind of become a thing since the pandemic more, but it basically means in the event of an emergency that, you know, the contract might be unenforceable. Captions, standard legalese, that just says that the headings, the body of the, the body of the provisions matter, not the headings. Authority is, you know, that Ms. Ziegler has authority to sign on your behalf and that Mr. Connor has authority to sign on his behalf. State funding, you know, that there is some statutory caps on how you can pay a superintendent out of state funds. As I understand, the way that we receive revenue, referendum money and things like that, that it's a non-issue here, it's just a matter of making sure we pay the salary out of the appropriate funds. I think this is more of an issue in like small counties that don't have referendums that get, you know, only money from state funds. There's essentially a cap on how much you can pay a superintendent in those counties. But like I said, as I understand it, it largely in practice doesn't apply to us. Notice, if, if we have to give legal notices to one another, that, you know, 10.21 designates how that's done. And then that is it. So that is the entire contract that we have. And again, if anybody has any questions on any of it, now that we've gone through all of it, I'm happy to answer those.
Mrs. Marinelli.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I do not mean to be redundant. This is going on to the pay, and if my fellow board members would just indulge me for a minute. I, I understand everything, the 255, the 20%, and the following years, I get all that. But if, if I understand, Ms. Ziegler, because this is 255 and you wanted the 30%, and does that include the first year?
Not percent.
I mean, 30,000. 30,000. I don't know why I have that percent on my mind. But anyway, is, is that, and then each year would be negotiable to have more of, you know, he could, let's say $40,000 year three? Or, because I just want to make sure I understand, I want to make sure we're giving Mr. Connor the, the best salary package that we can. And that's the thing is, if it's, the annual is 255,000 with, we're, with 20,000 or 30,000 base, and then each year would be evaluated to see if that, the bonus would be increased?
Well, so.
So I guess I just want to make sure I understand that part.
My personal opinion was to emphasize the significance of the bonus, so, and balancing that out, because not, you know, having to be fiscally responsible of not just going up and up and up, but I think the message that it sends is significant as we try to, and I think the board collectively had a good conversation today about shifting the culture in, in a way that's productive and, and, but, and it starts with some of those accountability metrics and incentives, excuse me. So, you know, I am, I have reservations of increasing the base pay and then lowering the incentive. In my mind, the incentive is so important that I would, I would, I would actually, even though it's more money, be more protective of the bonus incentive amount versus lowering it. So if that makes sense. Then moving to the next year though, I think as we discussed, and I, and I, and I do like that because there's a lot of ramp up as we look at things, where there's a lot of unknowns as to what our goals are, what, what we're going to be, you know, what Mr. Connor's going to outline as what he hopes to achieve. We have that kind of timeframe here. And so building that into it, again, it's more like setting the tone about shooting high and then having some stretch goals and compensating for that. And then, you know, again, the conversations I'd have with Mr. Connor, but, you know, this would be having, going forward, but also, you know, how he chooses to manage his staff is really entirely going to be up to him. The goals we set as a board are really us to hold him accountable to do, and I think that putting those bonus structures in place are, I think they're important and I think they're meaningful, and I think they allow the board significant leverage, and not a negative way. And that's why I wanted to emphasize how important that first year was about setting reasonable and attainable goals, understanding it's his first year in. But I think that as, once those contracts are let, you know, really it's, we pray and hope for the best and do everything we can to support them, but I think those bonus structures do play a significant role. And so I'm excited to see that we're all on the same page of supporting that. I think the, the aspect of going back to really working hard on the evaluation tool, which was, is a huge component of this, that moving in, and I don't want to get convoluted and complicated because I think it took us some time to get focused on what we meant by that. But my, the way I see it is that, again, if it were me, I would like to keep it at 30,000. I think, again, we have to be cognizant of how much money we're putting on the table, but because I think that incentive structure is very important. And then moving into how Mr. Edwards summarized it, which is where I think we're all, definitely all in line, is that moving into the following year, we have more concrete goals where we want to go and building the incentive structure even higher as we go to achieve those in year two.
And, and I understand that. I guess my, I must have a, probably a real simple brain, because I just kind of want to get a yes or no, or is.
I like that 30,000.
255 and 30,000? 255?
My preference would be 245.
That's what I want.
And 30.
Got it. Okay, thank you. That's all.
I got everything else, okay. We are, that's why I'm not trying to confuse anything. But she asked me the question. Mrs. Rose.
Thank you. I was looking for the same clarification, if you were entertaining 255 with a $30,000 bonus, but you are not, correct?
I am fine, if you want to move forward with, I think that the $30,000 bonus is important. I think, so if everyone wants to go 255, I would prefer it's say 245, but I would be, I think, again, I think that, that it underscores something important. So if people are interested in the 30,000 incentive, I think that I would be acceptable of keeping it that way.
I'm more comfortable with the $30,000 incentive if we aren't assuring any raise within the contract. If I hear you correctly, that you would entertain a 255 with a $30,000 raise.
With a $30,000 bonus.
$30,000 bonus, sorry. Good clarification.
I'm, honestly, I'm one of five here, I'm indifferent. My, my point was to emphasize, I think it's important to keep the bonus structure as a significant piece of this, and so I have reservations on lowering it. Understanding that people wanted to elevate the base, I would feel, I feel more comfortable preserving the bonus component of it, even though I would like it to be 245. But since I'm not getting that, I would say preserving the 30,000 because it sends a message. Mr. Edwards.
So what I, I want to be clear on here, because I think that we're, there's a lot of, lack of a better word, word salad going back and forth here, but for the purposes of the attorney, you cannot call the bonus a guarantee.
No.
Because if you call it a guarantee, it becomes base salary. And then base salary is a whole other conversation. So my other piece of this is that we have a dollar amount that was presented by the superintendent when he, he made the shift of a higher base salary and a lower bonus that he was comfortable with, because I read that, which would have been my counsel to the board, is I would rather give a higher base salary to someone the first year and a lower bonus the first year, because it's next to impossible to reach goals that we've all kind of said we're interested in, which is third grade reading scores. So there's no way that there's an impact in there within the first year. So we're going to come up with a guideline, and here's the reverse of that, is that if we then come up with a compensation plan that shows that it's obtainable to reach the 20,000, I think it de-incentivizes you when you didn't get the last 10,000. And that's not what I'm looking to establish either. I'm trying to establish, hey, we're all, we hear you, Superintendent, we're on the same page. We heard your, your presentation of a higher base with a lower, and we understand that, and we get it, and we're on your page. I think it's just unnecessary to add the additional 10,000, number one. And number two, you know, can you put a stretch goal in the first year for the, for that extra 10,000? I guess, but it's going to say, were you here every Tuesday? Did you show up every Tuesday at 8:00? You know, I, that's what I'm trying to say, is that we're, I just think we've, we, it's, we've done a good job, and we did agree to the 255 and 20. I just don't think it's necessary. That's my personal opinion.
Mr. Enos.
Yeah, because also, it's, it's just not 255, it's 290. It, you also have to put in there, it's 15,000 deferred. It's also the allowance for his car. It's also the $12,000 for medical expenses. So it's actually a 2,000, a $290,000 package at 255 and 20, which ultimately can go up to 310. So automatically, he is at 290.
I understand all that.
No, I'm saying it, I, nobody's saying it. I, I'm just saying what this board's opinion is, is I think that we agreed at the 255 and the 20, and I'm more than willing to stay at the 255 and the 20 as what's been agreeable as we move forward. And then the following year, we can make a $30,000 bonus, and on the following year, we can make a $40,000 bonus. We can continue to do that with achievable benchmarks for that incentivizing. That would be what, you know, what I'm looking for.
Any other comments? I, I was gonna, I was just trying to look at the language to see if we can put up to 30,000, not guaranteeing 20. I like the stretch goal, but I, again, it's a delicate balance, especially on year one, because you don't want to, again, you want the goals to be something that'll incentivize. I mean, it's, it's there for a reason. But man, if they knock it out of the park, then.
Then we can add.
But that's right, that's right. Then that's what we, okay, so, but that's where I, I just wanted, my concern overall, whatever, take out the numbers, was to lower the bonus structure and elevate the base. That is something I would prefer had to not done, even if we, so if you want to increase the base, because it's just the signaling of it, is that, that's where my concern was. Mrs. Rose.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't think that we've agreed till we've agreed, and that dialogue is what this is about, and I don't have an issue with it. And I'm just still affirming, I still hear Ms. Ziegler saying that she prefers some type of verbiage of a potential $30,000 bonus, and I don't want to ignore that, or, because there may be the possibility of consensus on it. This meeting is for agreement, or once we've come to some consensus, can we not revisit something in this meeting? Mr. Duggan?
Well, you always can revisit.
Thank you.
I will just throw one other thing out there, which I think is, goes without saying, is we need to put something, we need Mr. Connor to agree. So we can have, like, this is how we're going to do it, and that can be the marching orders to go back. At the end of the day, he has to agree too. It takes two to tango on these things, so.
I think that's pretty clear.
You know, I'm just going to go say, I think that if we left it at a maximum, a maximum of 30,000, we have to discuss this as a board collectively with the evaluation tool. I think that, again, we have to be reasonable, and that would be, perhaps that last 10,000's a substantial stretch goal. But again, it's all about the signaling. I don't think it guarantees us to have to do that. I think we can play with that in the evaluation. I guess it's a middle of the road, but I just, I think it goes a long way. I do, I do think it, I think it sends a strong message, and that's, that was the goal, and that's the way I interpreted our conversations over some months, and then certainly hearing from people in the community, and that's why it was put that way. So I just, so that's, that would, I, I will put that forward for consideration. 30,000 to be determined and broken down. Mrs. Rose.
Complete agreement with that. Thank you, Mrs. Ziegler.
Mrs. Marinelli.
Complete agreement. Complete agreement with that. Thank you.
Mr. Edwards.
Sorry, you're not going to achieve consensus today on that one. And the reason for that is the, it is, compensation plans and incentive, incentivization plans are something that I've done for many, many years, and it's demoralizing when the plan is 30,000 and they only earn 20. And it just, it's not a good thing. So I've done it, I've been there with great executives who didn't make plan, so I won't be supporting that.
Just to clarify, are we?
I wasn't looking to go off the rails here, I didn't, that was, I think.
Are we at 255 base year one with up to 30 bonus? Is that what the three of you want to do?
Yes.
Okay. And then the same plan for year two and year three thereafter?
Now, we're going back to where we were before. Stop, like, please, because we were, we were good. That was where it'd be re-discussed and reevaluated.
Okay. I just want to say thank you, everybody. Honestly, there's nothing harder than to negotiate a contract within the Sunshine laws with five board members.
No.
Like, honestly, it's very challenging, and I appreciate everybody's dialogue. I appreciate the really thoughtful dialogue I had with Mr. Connor's counsel, who's an excellent lawyer and is on these issues. You know, you all call me, and everybody, there's sometimes five ideas for one thing that, you know, sometimes there's a consensus emerges, sometimes not. You know, you instruct me to negotiate with the board chair, so that becomes, by default, by the way this board operates, the person that I go to for this. So we thought it was important to bring these issues to the public, to do this as transparently as we could within the Sunshine laws, so you all can hash these things out. So I just want to say thank you. It's very challenging to do this and put something down on paper that everybody's agree with, and I took a lot of hard work today, so I have much more guidance and clarity, and I'm appreciative that you were able to give that to me.
Now, because it needs to be formally adopted, again, the option is, we have the July 17th swearing-in. I think, Kathy, you have it on, is it 8:00 AM? Okay. So the option would be to do a quick vote beforehand, or we'd call another special meeting. I'm just not sure as far as their schedules, and we just need to make sure we have a quorum, so.
I think the only thing is, you can't, I wouldn't do it today, you want to permit public comment, okay?
No, 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 that's not an option. So we have to certainly make sure we vote, so let me just start over again. This needs to be released with appropriate time for the community to review the contract. I think that's important. A minimum, it's a two days, 48 hours. I don't know if emergency, if this falls within emergency, but a special meeting could be called, I think it's 72 hours, but I know that there is, again, then we deal with a quorum because there's, but however that works, those were the options. I do think it's important that we have, afford the time for the public to see it and weigh in, and then afford, the challenge with the 17th is that public comment, we want to ensure we have public comment, so if the swearing-in is at 8:00. But.
I would just say this, obviously, we, this, the next, how the sausage is made here is I get to reduce this to writing, and Mr. Connor has to agree to it, and I think we can do that. Presumably, he's agreeable to this, I mean, I guess time will tell, assuming he's agreeable to it. It's going to take a little time to reduce it to writing, I can do it today or tomorrow. So I think we could do it within 48 hours, but with the caveat that, obviously, you know, we have one side, clarity on one side, obviously, we need to have clarity on the other side as well.
So with that, once this is concluded, I think the other part is that we need to make sure that there is not any additional back and forth, so I don't know if there's additional authority that needs to be, this is best and final. I mean, that's what I want to make sure we are, we are in a clear direction, because that limits us in a profound way.
That would be, that would be helpful for me, to hear you all just agree that this is best and final, or however you want to do that, but.
Well, I'm the middle mediator, so I have to hear anything from everyone. If this is, everyone's happy with the posture it's in, and this is where we want to move forward, I don't have authority, or Duggan, Mr. Duggan doesn't have authority beyond that, so we just need clarity so that we don't have a lot of back and forth, we can lock this up and move forward. Mrs. Rose.
I would hope that we would be able to call a meeting. Thank you. I would hope that we would be able to call a follow-up meeting this week so that we can bring closure to the future potentially, and that I'm not interested in, I'm interested in feedback. I think we're putting forth a great good-faith effort and tremendous dialogue. I'm not in agreement to finalizing anything. I'm very confident that we've made a good-faith effort.
Mr. Edwards.
Finalizing as in, this is final anything, for clarification of vocabulary.
Mr. Edwards.
I think the intent here today, and I'm very confident that this could qualify as best and final, but there's a possibility that, as a human being, I missed something. So I'm open to hearing that Mr. Connor and his team has feedback to us that I'd be open to hearing.
Okay. Well, then, Mr. Duggan, then you have a?
I think I have more clarity than I did prior to the meeting today.
Okay. And then, based on that, a special meeting will be called once we have a sense of where you're at. Mrs. Tompkins, our amazing Mrs. Tompkins will find out and make sure everyone's schedule and a meeting time, and then we will notice it accordingly, which will allow for public comment. If there are no additional comments, we stand adjourned.